The order and as the current meeting is being recorded, would you please rise for the invitation by Council?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity you have given us to serve our borough and neighbors. Please give us the wisdom to make the decisions that serve the best interests of our constituents and the courage to make those tough decisions even when they aren't embraced by everyone. Help us remember what Psalm forty-seven eight says, "It is you who reigns over the nations." In your name we pray.
Amen. Please remain standing for the time of my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America to the republic and one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Give me your hand.
Mr. Secretary, would you please perform my roll call for the purpose of the recording? Tracy Burke here. And Hubert. Matthew Dinana. Darryl Littlefield here. Billy Munden.
Here.
Donna Rogers.
Here.
Matthew Shali.
Here. Richard Rollt.
Here.
Courtney Wompe.
Here.
And my counselors Hubert and Dinana did their out, took an orientation respectively. All right, next order of business is the consideration of the minutes and for regular session and work session. We need to please manage have two different motions.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the January ninth, twenty twenty-three regular for council.
I'll second.
Yeah, mentioned by the council of Littlefield and Wompe for the January ninth regular session, maybe eighty minutes. Uh, any comments, any necessary corrections? Awesome. All in favor of the approval of those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If that motion passes and likewise for the work session.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three for council work session meeting.
I'll second.
All right, I like some healthy competition fighting for you. All right, then I have a motion by council's Littlefield and Wong side of approval of the January sixth work session minutes. Any correction? And all favors approve those, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Secretary, though, are there any presentations for this evening? Of course, I have not. We might set a world record. Uh, all right, then let's go right into administrative reports. Mr. Mayor. And if you, Mr. President, I'd like to say a couple of things about some stuff that's going on this week in the community. Not necessarily for the folks in the room, but because this meeting has been recorded and people should have some things, but I'm happy. So. Here we go. It has been a trying week in towers with some very troubling conversation regarding defunding the Indian Valley Public Library over there stand on social and LGBT issue. There's a lot of things I can say on the topic, but I will try to keep it brief. I put up a detailed response on social media to hear more about. First, before you can throw stones at any of the volunteers up here and remember that they are all volunteers upon this day is please understand the unwinnable situation that we are often put in. In this case, keep our special service taxes the same and the fire company lose. Equalize the funding or flip flop them, the libraries. Raise taxes to accommodate the request of everyone that has their handout from us and the public loses in a year where we've already decided to raise taxes in a tough economic environment. There's no winning for any of us. But I sincerely believe that Towson Borough made an equitable choice upon the fire company and the library. That is not defunding the library. Instead, the library is receiving instead of the library receiving about fourteen thousand dollars more in tax. We agreed to give the library about seven thousand dollars less and the fire company about seven thousand dollars more. In the grand scheme of things, the hours of discussion that we spent on that issue should show you how seriously we take every dollar of our budget and set back that the manner of passage by partisan support proves that it was fair, equitable, and well thought. Some of you may not agree with it. Some of you may not agree with anything up here. But I can defend this particular decision with governance until I'm blue in the mix. Now on to a more serious issue, which is that if there are apparently some question about the reasoning behind why Towson's decision as a response to the politics of the Indian Valley Public Library based on what I assume might be happening in town for in about half an hour. There might be some validity to that concern, which is appalling. I'm not a mind reader. I don't know what my fellow counselors were thinking as we had long discussions about the budget. But I can say this, as mayor, I will not stand for Towson Borough being called a home for bigotry. If it was on the mind of any of our counselors in their decision making, and I do not think it was, then democracy prevailed with bipartisan support. And lastly, let me talk about a topic that I am rather uncomfortable discussing in public, but that I think is of critical importance in this conversation. I was elected in Towson three separate times, including at large, to be the office of mayor as an openly gay person. My husband Colin. Collins in the corner tonight. We are not the type of people that typically wave a pride flag necessarily, but we don't hide it from anybody else either. Colin and I are involved in many, many organizations in this community, some of which you may assume wouldn't be supportive of us. And you would be wrong. Towson has been nothing but open, loving, and supportive to us. I can't say that historically been the case, and I can't say that's the same experience for everyone, but I can say with full assurance that Towson Borough is not a home for hate. People of all races, creeds, orientations, and opinions are welcome here. I know that because I live it firsthand every day. No matter who you are, Towson is your home and you are welcome here. Thank you. Thank you, man. Um, I'm gonna move to the chief.
Oh, thank you, sir. Thank you. A preliminary report, uh, last week for the boards, uh, we're now ready for the public. Uh, January was a busy month. It typically is not because of the weather, but we're actually up, um, twenty minus six percent last year at this point. Uh, we did any traffic stops issued thirty-three citations, we had fourteen vehicle crashes. I'm designing them across. Unfortunately, there were two injuries and one taken down. We had six arrests, hundred forty-one home service calls, forty-four assistance, other eighteen, three hundred and other eighty calls for six hundred and fifty-nine calls per month. Uh, our two new part-time officers have been working diligently to get up the speed. They between them, they put in about a hundred and sixty some odd hours. That was good. Um. At that part, we're moving along very nicely with implementing our new updated politician procedures to meet, uh, pleian complacency, uh, which I'm very happy about. Uh, we've been working very hard on the backlog of our investigations and cases that we have as well as cleaning out our evidence locker to make a stationable measure. Um, we had mentioned and you had approved the agreement of bulk control, uh, for enforcement on the school buses around. Uh, the work is being done. It's actually going to go into effect on March sixth. That'll get the technology ready and get all the other agreements signed. So that is coming. We didn't mean last week over. Um, we are not anticipating any problems when Eagles win the Super Bowl. However, a couple of grounds, uh, aren't anticipating problems. The Vash mutual league, so we are on standby for that. Um, as I mentioned in our last meeting officer Bernie Greenberg, after nine years since an applicant requirement is an officer of this department. Uh, in turn of by and on January twenty seventh, I was very honored to attend a school program at EMC where they honored it daily for its decades of service. That's a long picture of that. Uh, additionally, uh, with a lot of help from this Kaiser, we have submitted all the paperwork for the closeout of our twenty twenty-one D C B grant. I got an email back today that said everything looked good. So I'm anticipating that to be done by the end of the week. Um, and we have actually been very busy in the park behind us, uh, both good and bad. It's getting used a lot for walking, trying to say hi to people. Uh, we have had a number of issues with a very small number of juveniles, uh, who we are dealing with, who we are identifying, and we are so we are doing what we can to get ahead of that. And that is all I have was a big problem.
I just want to see. Will you get a monthly report out from the school as far as those buses go, just just for progress on how that?
It's actually gonna be coming from the bulk control company.
Okay.
The actual ones administering it? Yes, we love it. Now, I get it for Osboro, we can get it free.
Yeah, I would just be curious to see how, you know, how many people would catch in our borough. Uh, that's what I.
Chief, are you able to elaborate on the big down?
Uh, it's actually still under investigation at the point of waiting for a report back from Carter's office. Uh, so the only thing I can tell you is, uh, it was a one-vehicle accident. It was not a hit and run as reported. Uh, again, the only thing we're waiting for to finish the state report is the Bud Fox back. Yeah, that was important. Thanks for that preliminary confirmation you gave us because that is important to quell any rumors of, you know, potential hitting run, which had started prior to meeting the agency. So I appreciate the enthusiasm of the public. It's just, um, our request that you contact us first before things get out there. Because some of the phone calls I was getting while on scene were completely erroneous and out of hand. Uh, and if I was getting them, I'm sure there are on social media.
Thank you. Hi, Charlotte, excellent.
Hi, you have the legislature's report in front of you. I don't have anything to add today.
I'm going to start.
Welcome back, Charlotte. Yes. How are you doing?
Thank you, but here's tonight, please. This report is on. Yeah. Something that, uh, would be drafted to Mike, I can't wait for speaker later. We'll see. Um, like the other thing I would say, I've had a lot of great comments on the new flashing pedestrian, uh, signs on Broad Street, uh, Second Street, Fifth Street.
We are having an issue with one of the signs. Uh, I don't know if it's an issue with the
I think it's the sun.
I think it's a placement, not not equipment related, but we're trying to figure out a way to get more sun on that particular solar.
Yeah, great. It's a challenge. We're excited. Anyway, yeah, that's good. Good job. You did a great job.
Mr. President, he's not here, but I will say just because it's being reported, um, the God outfit, thank you. I see all how many hours they spent putting that together, but, um, it is used all day, every day, and the kids are super grateful for it. Getting a lot of use.
Just your kids alone?
No.
Their front yard. Uh, okay, and before, Mike, I go to you, I think with him, the mayor, another opportunity, because you have an administrative.
I don't. You don't want to share. So.
And you have the, I'm gonna, yeah, oh, well, so there's a Shepherd's pie fundraiser uh, by the Perseverance Auxiliary Club and homemade pies to be, quote, by pork parodi to benefit the Southern Butter Company. Fourteen dollars for the two-person pie and compared to Towson. Oh, you want to send it to Gmail? Yeah, I'll mention it. So you can order your pies at PG E F C auxiliary fundraiser at gmail dot com and get more information there. So the orders and payments have to be, be by March before.
I'll do it next time, I promise.
Fires here.
But I don't know.
It's Shepherd's pie, not into pie.
Okay, I'm out. Where's the lights? Oh, yeah. All right, I gotta. All right, then, uh, let's go back to my permanent. In this capacity, it's for a landing.
Start out with the, uh, meeting schedule for, uh, February, the planning commission met last week. The, uh, next meeting of Borough Council will be, uh, work session on Monday, February twentieth. February twentieth is, uh, President's Day holiday. The Borough Office will be closed during the day. However, we will be having our work session meeting that evening. Uh, there is an advertisement that is going to be published in the paper and sent out. Uh, and you have copies on your desk, but we will be having a special Borough Council meeting on Monday, February twenty-seventh. The purpose of that meeting is to conduct a conditional use hearing for a schooling development company. A schooling development company is developing this former high school site. They do have a potential to locate a Starbucks on one of their designated commercial pad sites uh, running East Broad Street. Uh, the use is a permitted use. The reason for the conditional hearing is that, um, Starbucks is requesting a drive-through service for that. Drive-through service windows in that in the in the Warren District are only permitted by conditional use here. Primarily, the purpose of that is to require the applicants to conduct a traffic study to ensure that there's sufficient stacking, uh, opportunity on site. You don't have issues with, uh, uh, traffic backing out onto, uh, Broad Street, which initially those happened when the dump window that's right up the street. So, uh, that will be discussed and presented to Borough Council formally at meeting. On the twenty-seventh, uh, but the real issue before Borough Council is the suitability of that location for the drive-through service window and not so much the Starbucks restaurant.
And just to clarify, we we did get a positive endorsement from the planning commission.
Yes, uh, planning commission, uh, did, uh, endorse it last week. They actually discussed it even the month prior. Uh, but we'll be getting a little bit more formal information, uh, to Borough Council before the hearing from from both, uh, the local planning commission as well as I think Montgomery County Planning Commission was attending to make comments as well. Uh, carrying on, uh, with the meeting schedules, uh, lunch, we're also going to make a slight change. Our next Borough Council meeting, um, will be the March sixth. Uh, the following Monday, the thirteenth, uh, will be our March Borough Council work session. The following week I will be away, uh, and so we'll we'll slide the work session up. So we can, uh, we can have that. That is everything for the meeting schedule. The, uh,
Sorry, can you repeat the two March dates? Then so we'll be the first Monday of March.
First Monday is Borough Council meeting.
This is the work session.
Work session.
I think that three weeks in a row, how?
All right, then, um, moving to the business, uh, this evening, um, there is an ordinance that has been, um, actually prepared and recommended by the, uh, planning commission to amend the zoning ordinance to regulate small wireless facilities uh, within right of ways to the borough. Uh, there are no applications, um, before Borough Council for such facilities. However, the, uh, recommendation is to prepare the zoning in the event that an application would come forward to the borough. That has been, like I said, prepared by, uh, our planning commission. And actually, uh, Montgomery County Planning Commission helped with the model ordinance and also had input on the draft thing. So that has been advertised and is recommended for formal consideration. See. We advertise, uh, for bids for equipment rental contract that carry us through, uh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, P K Moyer, uh, has been the holder of that contract for many years. And they again are the recommended contractor for, uh, this contract. And we recommend, uh, award of the, uh, contract to, uh, P K. Uh, they provide various equipment rentals that assist with, um, excavation, uh, site work, uh, and paving. Third item is, um, authorization to, uh, formally execute a marketing agreement with, uh, Schwartz and Company to, uh, market the three-acre parcel on, um, from our Cherry Lane property. He would like to put that up for sale and and see, uh, if there is interest. Uh, however, before we can begin the actual marketing, we need to complete the, uh, subdivision plan, uh, get the record plan approved and signed and recorded before, uh, Schwartz and Company can begin marketing. Site, Frank County Township did approve the, uh, plan conditionally. And we are continuing to work to satisfy the conditions of the township. The, uh, fourth item for consideration was a discussion that we had in work session. I know there's a committee of council working on the, uh, next manager search. Um, it would appear as though the recommendation is, uh, to retain the services of the Lafayette College, uh, minor center. They have assisted many municipalities across the state in, uh, searches for managers and, uh, variety of, uh, staff for municipalities. The, uh, next item is a development plan that the planning commission, and I know Borough Council has discussed it, and that is the conversion of a former automotive repair shop of thirty West Chestnut Street into the Branch Creek Brewery and Patery, uh, the property is owned by Dave Clummer, who has been working diligently with the planning commission or clients to, uh, renovate the, uh, property into a, uh, commercial use. I know one of the, uh, conditions that the planning commission asked for was a shared parking agreement that has been executed, uh, today, uh, between, uh, the owners and university back. So parking is going to be afforded to, uh, to Branch Creek, um, right from the adjoining parking lot of by the best. Uh, there's also a couple other minor, um, conditions as well, but, uh, the planning commission has enforced a plan. It's our recommendation that Borough Council be the same. Uh, we have, the last two items are authorizations to, uh, pair ordinances. I don't know how quickly we can, uh, prepare these ordinances and get them advertised for consideration. Uh, maybe in another month or so, Bob Burger is away. But, uh, we are looking to, uh, prepare an ordinance to formally enact, uh, one-way traffic restrictions that are currently existing in the borough by, uh, temporary order. The two in particular are Diamond Street between, uh, Main and Wild and on, uh, South School. And the other ordinance preparation would be preparing ordinance revising the zoning ordinance to, uh, further revise, uh, assigned regulations. In particular, we're cleaning up some, uh, stated language in the ordinance as well as addressing, uh, permits for murals. So I don't know when those ordinances will come forward, but probably not in March, perhaps. Depends on how quickly we can get the ordinances and since, uh, particular assigned ordinance is a zoning amendment that needs to go back to the Montgomery County Planning Commission for review and comment before we can put it off. Or it's concerning the traffic restrictions does not need that. That's everything I have for now.
Any questions for Mike? And you have another opportunity to be, to have any point of any concerns, uh, during the motions, but.
I just had a question about the use, special use hearing. Oh, we talked in work session about having our engineers do like the studies that we had something else to go off of. Did we get that done or no?
No, our engineers would review the, uh, traffic engineer's, uh, proposal. We do know that engineer, Andy Heinrich, has has actually uh, completed some traffic engineering for us. Particularly the design, the, uh, signal system out here on, at the lines. So we are familiar.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mike?
Can I ask a question?
I'll give you an opportunity during the public session in just a moment.
About that. It's quick.
Go ahead.
Parking, you mentioned parking and shared with university. Aren't they already sharing with Broad Street? And we have pizza place on Broadway. There's already a parking problem. Isn't parking gonna be a problem?
Yeah, this is my great for public comment. Okay, we won't be able to answer that with enough detail. We won't be able to a- answer it in enough detail for you right now, but we are all over parking, Cleveland.
It's actually the lot that's before the operations center that if you go by there is usually not parked.
One Moon Street?
Yeah. You'll find that that lot is not able to be able to travel. The office is not.
Okay, any other questions provided by council? Okay. Next is the approval for the bills for both the, uh, the month, the, the bills that are signed for the month of January. Thank you. Before we do the bill, I don't want you guys to give the benefits. Are there any committee reports for this meeting?
I have a report.
Yeah.
Um, the Borough Manager Search Committee, uh, is meeting with the Minor Center on February twenty-seventh. Uh, the smaller committee to meet with the director and go over, uh, logistics for that start of that search. And we're still in the works with drafting a job description, and we'll be getting that done before we meet with the woman from the other side.
Can I take you back on that? So, uh, Julie and the committee will have, or council, some advanced information, particularly as we get closer, when we need to formalize and finalize that job description, so everyone can have their input on that. And we'll be talking about it a lot. And we'll be talking about it a lot, but tonight we have a motion. The 27th, we'll, we'll meet with Nicole and probably the work session during March. We'll talk about it in more detail as well. So we're well ahead of the game. Our early indication is probably a four-month timeline will, will be suitable. And you know, we're still targeting as an early, an early target with the October of this year for that. Any other, any other committee reports?
Were you going to do on their own public average? You don't mean just for the social media side thing?
You can talk about it.
Yeah, so we're actively pretty far on the Saturday Borough Facebook page for the Borough Council. Expect that to hopefully be presented at work sessions this month. As far as the actual law and go live plan. And those questions around the usage of it and those things. So I've buttoned up all the things I think we need to do so we're ready to present for.
Do you want to add on?
Public average, so the office hours for February will be on the Saturday, the from 11:00 to 1:00 having a lobby. And then just one other, council, Wompo and myself, along with Liz from Shatterton Connect. Work on articles for the next Indian Valley Day newsletter. So the next edition of that that comes out is the articles from.
Mr. He, Mr. Chen are not here, but we did have a meeting along with the mayor and Mr. Cole with the management companies to then bring your concerns about the contract going into the 2023 season. I think they heard us loud and clear, my hope. And we have some changes coming. Actually, that's the article that I'll be writing about for Indian Valley today. So hopefully that'll get some publicity and people can kind of see where, where we're at and where we're going and how the pool works and that kind of thing. Working on finalizing pool rates and getting some manpower in place to help process the memberships, then we're ready to roll in May, which is rapidly approaching. Will snack stand, is that public information or?
I'm still working.
So some changes in the snack and infrastructure as well, so.
Fortunately, will the March work session be suitable to work, to present your proposals for the augmented staff?
March of February. Ideally, February.
March will be way too late.
Globally.
March will be way too late, so. Okay, you guys will be ready, well.
Yeah.
Perfect. Time work than bullet point work. Any other committee? All right, now let's move on to approval of the bills. And I have one motion.
This president will make a motion to approve the bills for the month of January 2023, as well as pay the recurring bills for February 2023.
I'll second. All right, I have questions by councils. Charlie and Littlefield for approval of regular bills for the month of February as well as recurring bills. Excuse me, for January as well as returning bills for February. Are there any questions regarding those bills? We do have a list of recurring invoices. I'm hearing none, all in favor of those, please say aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed? Please, so clear those. All right. And Lucy, I will give you the first opportunity. I'd like to open that for public comment now. If you're a borough resident, a property owner, business owner, I invite you to come to the podium, state your name and address, and we'd love to hear what you have to say tonight. But Lucy gets to go first if she wants to. Yes, she did. And you got me all discombobulated.
That parking lot is, so Branch Creek Brewing will be on Chestnut Street. And the shared parking will be the back half of the Universitas parking lot. But no one from Broad Street is walking that far. So the congestion will not be affected. Will not further be affected by this. If you're walking all the way from that parking lot to Chestnut to Broad Street, we have a good problem because that means a lot of people in town. But I don't think it will be a problem.
Plus you can get your 10,000 stuff from there.
Thank you, I'm Penny Price. I'm at 402 East Broad Street in Satterton, and I'm also the Borough Representative to the Indian Valley Library. So I applaud the mayor's comments and would like to add additional context from the library. At first, I'd like to say in terms of the terms being used, the library had no input or influence on the recent letter to the editor or recent journalism articles. We really appreciate the longstanding collaboration between the library and the borough. Though it had a direct negative impact on our activities as good neighbors and fellow stewards of our community, the library the library willingly agreed to the decrease in our funding as we realized that everyone needs to work together to support the services that make our community function and be a great place for everyone to live. As the Vice President of the Library Board, I would like to reiterate our appreciation of the board's continued support. It's working together and making compromises for everybody that makes our community great. So thank you.
Hello, Christina Devergeles, manager of Satterton Connects. First, I would like to invite the borough and also Borough Council. I know Public Works is not here tonight, but that would include them. And to our volunteer appreciation party, this is something that we had right before the world shutdown in 2020, and it was wonderful to bring out not only our volunteers, but our sponsors, our logistics team, fire company, anyone that has supported Satterton Connects in a successful season, which includes a lot of moving parts. And we just want to take the opportunity to have an appreciation event. So this is your formal invitation if you did not see the email from us. But that is being held on Thursday, February 23rd. So it's coming up at the end of this month from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Sartor Midnight Church Fellowship Hall. So just come, 5:30 to 7:30, pop on in. It's just a way for us to say thank you and also have a night of appreciation. So please join us for that. And anyone in the audience who has volunteered for us. And then we're moving on to our first event of the season for 2023. It's So You Think You Can Cook. We're happy to announce that it is back in the borough. So everyone has requested that for quite some time. And because of the wonderful collaboration from Sartor Fire Company, we will be having it in their facility. And we're working very closely with them to make this event even more wonderful, wonderful every year. We do have the opportunity to expand the event too, because we will be in a bigger space. So that's something that potentially we look forward in years to come. That is on Wednesday, March 8th, from 6:00 to 9:00. We are still looking for chefs. We have just a couple spots left for chefs. We still have open sponsorship opportunities. And if you don't want to cook, but you like to eat and drink, come out and join us for the evening where you get to vote for your, your favorite chef. So you can eat and drink around the room. Tickets are $20 and they will be 25 at the door. There are some discounts for package pricing. So just go to our website, sartorconnects.com, and you can see more information about the event. Are there any questions? No? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, everyone. I'm Dylan Stroop. I just came here to find out what may be happening with the Cherry Lane parcel, if anything. I live across the street. And if I had it my way, nothing would be going there, but as I see that, I don't own it. My opinion really doesn't matter. I was just kind of curious what might be going on at how many houses, that type of stuff. If there's any plans at all, I don't know.
It's very preliminary and your opinion does matter. There will probably be commercial development on that site if we get what we meaning at least one commercial building, not more.
Yeah, I'd rather it just be like a house or two, but.
Not, it's not even advertised for sale yet.
Yeah.
So I can't answer that, but most likely.
It will be like a commercial.
We'll sell it. And it will be a purchase.
All right.
With some input, technically that's the Frank County Township.
Okay.
The property, but.
Still kind of up to them.
Township, so keep, keep on it. I mean, I mean, it would be fun there happening, but.
Okay, does it, does it really matter or just like?
Well, let me give you an additional, uh, additional. Let me give you some additional information though. So we will vote tonight market a 3.8 acre parcel of that. That's what the mayor's referring to, the section that. So background is the borough purchased that property years ago with the full intention of having future public works facility there. And our plan now, as the mayor said, will authorize the marketing of that 3.8 acre. We'll see how that goes. It's going to take about four months after we actually get the subdivision in place. And we're reserving the area where, that we're currently using to put saw and sand and other equipment. There's an existing commercial industrial type of building there that we would reserve for our future public works facility. That's the general plan. There'll be a lot more discussion. We're far away from it, we're at least four or five months away from even knowing if we get adequate signs and interested people in the property of that 3.8 acre parcel.
I figured, but.
Impact the neighbors. I mean, your voice matters, so.
So what's your address?
I'm right on the corner of Penn and Cherry.
Penn and Cherry.
It'll be 334.
Mr. Gressman, I don't, I don't know if he's referring to any parcel.
Yeah, I don't know if there's like different parcels or not.
Cherry that Frankonia, that's, that may be a little.
So a different parcel. You have no idea, so that's all Frankonia? Yeah. Yeah, I have no idea.
The parcel, Saturn Hat Field Pipe. It's a corner of Cherry and Saturn Hat Field Pipe goes up towards the river.
Yeah, yeah.
Frontage is along Saturn Hat. If you're talking about a parcel owned by ladies.
Yeah, that one. That's why I figured you, there was the same one because you're talking commercial property.
And that's also in Frank, the township.
Yeah, maybe we will. Thank you. No, no problem, thank you.
Am I being invited? Yes, you are.
So my intention here tonight was to come and just listen and try to catch up on how things were progressing. But having heard the mayor's statement, I also want to, well, first, Michael Pipe, 570 East Garfield Avenue. I want to commend the mayor in making that statement. Being open in that way to you as an adult man, fully comfortable in who you are is one thing, okay? But consider the high school students in the Central Buck School District or the Pen Ridge School District who aren't quite sure who they are yet, but they're figuring it out. Policies passed by those two school districts are intolerant, if not hateful. And they are targeting a specific community, the LGBTQ plus community. So there is a certain anxiety level here in Satterton Borough and Satterton Area School District that those of us who like to think, oh, it can't happen here are starting to be concerned that yes, it can happen here. And if you haven't been to a school board meeting in the last six or nine months, maybe you should consider attending, any one of you. Because it is rearing its ugly head in our school district. And so when their playbook is to lobby for defunding of the library and lobby for that funding to go either to the police or to the fire department, we saw that playbook play out here, at least by appearances. And to compare both of those special taxes in the same sentence as being, well, we're taking away from the library, we're giving to the fire department or the fire company. It raises that anxiety level another level up higher. And given that the borough received three quarters of a million dollars from the federal government through the American Rescue Plan Act, one has to wonder what, where does this financial need come from to cut back the library? And without a statement from the taxing authority in the borough, which is Borough Council, no offense to you, Mr. Mayor, but you don't sit on Borough Council. You're not a member of the taxing authority. It's these nine people. Without a statement from them explaining their rationale separately for reducing the library funding, separately for increasing the fire company funding, we are left to imagine that there is some kind of a connection here. Both of those services, I like to say, fight enemies of humankind, okay? The fire department, it's fire, okay? The library, it's ignorance. And ignorance often travels with intolerance. And we are living in a time where this intolerance is getting closer and closer and closer. So there you have it. I speak for myself, not for any community organization or group. Thank you for the time.
Coming forward. I will just give one response, one singular response. The mayor, you're correct, is not a very member of council unless he's to break a tie. He is a deliberate member of council, however. He deliberates in all of our proceedings, which for every proceeding we had were 100% open to the public. The comment that I want to make is that every councillor here went on record for a rationale, which was two of the, of the item, which those of you that will have gotten your tax bill would have seen the bill, which I just got mine and forwarded on to the mortgage company. So you know, you clearly see the point three and, and the point three. And our rationale was this year, we, and I've said this to many people, Donna and I, who's on the finance committee, we talk about it all the time. We're not a wealthy township. We're a poor borough. We don't have the same resources that, that it's typically driven by real estate. It centered on one piece that when, we're not saying one's more important than, than another. Our vote was to equalize the money a little bit. And we felt that the fire company was being disadvantaged and that they pay both North and Water Thorings fire high energy as well as their worker compensation. And we said, you know, we see how much they struggled. You guys see on the sign, if you go by person, there's over 400 calls last year. These guys, they're out off the con. And it was an acrimonial. And it was an acrimonial, uh, adjustment, and like Dan said, uh, with. Really about a seven thousand dollar swing either way. That was a rationale. There was no other deliberation on any other point. And the other thing is, I would, uh, correct you in saying. The individual councillors will speak their mind when they make their vote. And we know what, uh, the results of, of the vote was. They don't have to document what they're thinking in their head, so.
So, if I may respond. So I didn't come here to debate, and like I said, first off, I came here to listen. But, so what you just did was you gave a rationale for increasing the perseverance fire company. Funding. But nothing to explain why the library funding is cut. If, if the same rationale is that we're a poor borough. And we can't afford, and we have to cut back a little bit on the library, then end of discussion. But, um, that. That is not what I have, I have heard or seen.
I need to provide transcript of my speech that I made on the night that we voted, because the last paragraph I said. We cannot afford for our taxpayers to have increased funding on all respects. I don't believe you were at that meeting. And you talked about ignorance and the library fighting that. It is completely ignorant to stand up here and connect the dots of something. When there's no basis in fact for it. It is dangerous to this community and to the people who sit on this council.
I did not, um, claim that anybody on council was ignorant. And I find that your response to me, the angry tone to it, is inappropriate for, uh, this kind of a forum. Alright, thank you.
Would anyone else, uh?
Seventeen and a half Franklin, I have just one, uh, just a question about. They're talking about the money for the library, but doesn't Telford and Frankonia put in money too? Aren't they all serving the same places?
Can I answer that? No, they're not. Frankonia gives zero to the library. They give, Frankonia does?
Yeah.
Alright, so I'll back up on the, the second, um, the second was, I'm sorry. Um, who doesn't? Upper South, upper, upper South does not. Telford tonight is taking it out of their budget and making it a line item.
May I recommend that we don't necessarily discuss what other.
I just, I just asked that question. I mean, every, it seems when you're talking, everything's on Satterton. Okay, you got other communities surrounding that. To me, that just doesn't make any sense. And my other thing with, uh, you, Dan, okay, uh, with anybody that's a homosexual, always been around in this community, okay? And the other thing is, I was taught that a child is a gift from God, and you are a child and everybody else is. And if people don't like that, that's their problem, but if they got a problem, they need to take that up with God.
Thank you.
This is actually my first borough meeting. I just moved in in October, uh, five twenty-seven. Um, so, uh, it's five twenty-seven Valley Lane, uh, just wanted to come, I guess I picked a good one. Oh, I'm sorry, Wade Henshaw. Yes, I, I picked up on that, uh, and I am not gonna chime in a lot, a lot of things, but this guy says something, uh, very interesting, and I think that needs to be pointed out about. Uh, the school districts and the school board meetings, there are some very, uh. Single track minded, uh, people that come and, and speak that, and maybe they are, that's their most passionate about. Uh, gender studies or, um, LGBTQ being taught in the school, or I guess even discussed in the school. But, but when I hear that that is, um, it just feels exclusionary. And it's, it's not something that I think we should, I think we should try and put a damper on that as quickly as possible in this, um. I, I don't want anybody to think that you can be exclusionary and, and still be, uh. Well, uh, an upstanding man, member of, of our borough. I think we need to move forward and kind of be inclusive of everybody and. Uh, I think that we should be aware of what's going on in the school boards. And now, I don't have a child yet, but I hope one day I will. And I hope that they're gonna go to the school boards, like, there's time to get this stuff figured out, but I want, I don't want. Arguments over if you can teach gender or genders in our school, when I have a son or a daughter or a. Uh, however they identify as, you know, so, thank you. Five twenty-seven Valley Lane.
Mr. President, I also had comments of the conversation on tax, um. Just, just something that I want, I wanna point out, we, we were originally at a point two seven and a point three three for the. Fire department and actually defunding or decreasing the library further. The library came out. And spoke to us, um, and told us the impact it would have on them. Those were the conversations. They weren't anything else about a person's character, how they identify, what books are there, it was. Purely on the substance of how it would impact the library, and we took that in their mind. We had a very. Interesting evening with the fire department presenting that evening, and we still stuck by and voted out loud, so. I felt very comfortable with, with the entire council's ideas and thoughts and opinions on it.
And I just wanna thank Wendy for coming up and doing what she did, because I think that the library is saying something speaks volumes for us up here and kind of clarifying anything. Um, because you didn't have to do that. Wendy's, Wendy's, right, sorry. But thank you, I, we, we really, I really appreciate it.
Excuse me, I just have one more, a couple more things I wanted to say. You're not the only ones that are doing this in the school. The churches are doing the same thing, and they're having their problems, okay? But the people that are doing this, they're not so much the homosexual as everybody, what they want, it's the government pushing this to make everybody hate each other. Okay, so maybe you guys need to think about that too.
Given what he said.
You went from thirty-three. You went from thirty-three to twenty-seven, back to thirty. But when the vote, when the motion came up to approve the millages. Another effort was made to reduce the village for the library back to twenty-seven. Okay, so. And, but I'm saying that the full story needs to be told. When you leave that fact out, it appears to be misleading. So, you know, the lot, you, you spoke with the library, in spite of speaking to the library, an effort was made to once again pull that funding down. And it's just a matter of, let's tell the full story, okay? I know it's not a courtroom, but the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
That's what I expected, why, uh, the election issue, whether they're sworn or not. No additional comments from council. So move on. Would anyone else like to make a comment unrelated, uh, to the library or fire?
I heard a letter about like funding, and they were talking about a, uh, street sweeper.
Oh, the mayor's memo.
Yeah.
You're speaking right now, when I'm picking it up.
So were you gonna, were you guys looking into buying a new street sweeper? Or thinking about it? Okay, that's, that's better. I don't know, it just seems like street sweepers don't do much, that seemed like that would be a waste of money. Yeah, yeah, whenever I see them.
And that's more. And that's more.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, they just seem like a waste of money, and like, they don't seem to do much, but, I don't know. Yeah.
Your curve must not be as varied as my guess.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, alright, well.
Any other ones on the side we can run and name the street sweeper? I don't want any recite. Maybe, I'll drink beer after this meeting.
Think part of what we're trying to do is create a place where people can come together and have these conversations, a place where it's a little bit more. Uh, obviously hospitable, but. Opportunities to, to engage and dialogue, remember who we are as people, uh, I think when we have differences of opinions. Always works best when you can think well of another person, but of course, we just don't have enough slack from today. We're all together, so, look forward to being a part of creating some of those opportunities, sure.
Can you be open on Monday, so we can comment on the news?
Well, just for you guys.
Alright, then, public comment time is closed, and we'll move to the business of the evening. And for those of you that don't have any good television to watch, we have about. Seven or eight motions, and we'll go proceed to review those. So the first, as Mike beat up his ordinance to regulate the small wireless facilities. We've spoken about it many, many seconds, and a motion for that.
Mr. President, I make a motion to enact ordinance number two, three, seven, five, six, zero, one. Amending the zoning ordinance to provide regulations for small wireless facilities located within Sartre Borough's race overlay.
I'll second.
Yeah, I have motion by councillor Charlie, uh, seconded by councillor Rogers. In that ordinance number twenty-three dash seven fifty-six dash oh one to amend the zoning ordinance. Provide regulations for small wireless facilities located within Sartre Borough's right of the place. Are there any questions? Comments? Point of inquiry?
Like, just a question of, private, private businesses contacting, you know, how does that change as far as the, the small wireless thing, like, you know? If, if somebody wants to put a name of business and they wanna throw an attack, do we still have a say in that ahead of time? Or is it just in our area, like, streets?
That ordinance is just a. A lot, a lot of the five G technology are smaller units that would go on utility poles. Throughout the borough, and they're usually.
That's what I thought.
Pretty many, um, so it's addressing what they look like, how they get installed, what they can't be installed on. And Matt, it would be any, any or of them.
Any of them, yeah.
So, wh- wherever they are, Redwood Highway Street, sidewalk alley, those easements. Easements or the one flat.
That was the, yeah, yeah, the person, I, I just. Prime business department by a minute.
Okay, then. Any other comments? Alright, hearing none, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Secretary, that's unanimous. Item eight B, consideration for the bids and equipment rental contract.
Mister President, I'll make a motion to award the equipment rental contract to P K Moore and Sons, eight thirty-two Allen Town Road, Earlington, Pennsylvania. For the period February first, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second. Okay, I have a motion by councillors, Womple and Littlefield. To award the equipment rental contract to P K Moore and Sons of eight thirty-two Allen Town Road, Earlington. For the period, uh, next twenty twenty-three through December of twenty twenty-four. Any questions? Alright, and none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See, that's also unanimous, and now our confusion on the property, you were mentioning. We have the correct property, but we're gonna try to tell them that, but frankly, um. Regarding Schwartz and Company Consulting Agreement.
Mr. President. I make a motion to authorize the execution of a consulting agreement with Schwartz and Company, Montgomeryville. That's made to assist with the marketing and sale of the Cherry Lane parcel.
I'll second. And motions by councillor Charlie and, or the second by councillor Littlefield, to authorize execution of the consulting agreement. With Schwartz and Company, Montgomeryville, Pennsylvania, to assist with the marketing and sale of the Cherry Lane parcel. It is in Frankonia Township, but it's at the intersection of Sartre Hatfield Place and Cherry Lane. Uh, are there any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, well, actually, let me make one comment, so, just so everyone knows, as mentioned previously. We'll, we'll execute the contract, in fact, everyone had an opportunity to review and comment on the contract, so we'll sign that contract. However, as Mike mentioned, we will not actually market the property until the formal. Subdivision by Frankonia Councilor. Once that's done, we'll market, that will commence day one. And the other clarification is. What, the day that we begin to market, uh, we're open to receive bids. We'll go through a one hundred and twenty day. Period to receive bid. And they can be presented anytime, but we'll actually won't open the bid. Uh, for some time, so it'll, it'll be four months, at which time we'll reveal the bids and then make a decision if we're gonna accept one of them. So that's what you're, uh, voting for today is, but that's the consulting agreement. Uh, alright, so I have the motions, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's all taken down, man. Alright, the most important activity of the year, yeah, right here, right now. Uh, approval to, uh, get the Mayor's Center going.
Um, Mister President, I make a motion to authorize the execution of the consulting agreement with Lafayette College Manor Center. To assist with the search and appointment of the next borough manager and administrative staff. I second.
Okay.
You guys should play that one.
Yeah.
Just for the audience, that's like a matter of procedure, generally whoever you hear first make that motion. Uh, they're generally in favor of the proposal. The second, the second motion means that someone on council believes that. The motion is worthy of deliberation or, or actually putting, you know, putting in place. So, uh, they don't necessarily have to be in, in approval of it, so sometimes. You might see the votes swing a little bit depending on where it is, but yeah, this is, uh, a really great step, I, I, um. Do leave a command view on the efforts that you've done so far, and, uh, we'll keep, we'll sound like a broken record, we're gonna. Uh, the replacement of the man that's sitting over there that's been doing a job for forty years is our most important task for the year. So, besides my soapbox, does anyone else have any other comments? Alright, then, uh, so we have the motion to authorize the execution of the consulting agreement with Lafayette. Uh, College Manor Center to assist with the search and appointment of the next borough manager and administrative staff. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item eight B for thirty West Chestnut Street. Branch Creek Brewery and Tavern.
Mister President, I make a motion to approve the development plans of Branch Creek Brewery and Tavern. For the property at thirty West Chestnut Street, Saturday.
I'll second.
Yeah, a motion by councillors Littlefield and Womple to approve the development plans of Branch Creek Brewery and Tavern. For the property at thirty West Chestnut Street in Satterton. And can we add an amendment on it? So open the council on Mondays?
The first one, then, okay. Alright, then, uh, any comments, questions, concerns? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
That is also, yeah. Now, item, item F for the one-way traffic restriction.
Mister President, I make a motion to authorize preparation and advertisement of importance for formal consideration in acting. One-way traffic restrictions on South School Lane and on Diamond Street is currently posted under temporary order.
I second.
Here's the place to get in. Okay, I have motion by councillor Littlefield reminded to authorize solicitors to prepare the, uh, advertised. And they, and, and the advertising of an ordinance for formal consideration in acting one-way traffic restrictions. On South School Lane and on Diamond Street that's currently posted under temporary order. Are there any questions? Somebody has to have a question. I do have one question. For school ring. Uh, the temporary order, it's still a time restriction, right? Monday through Friday, eight to four, whatever's posted, is that correct? I have to go back and research that. That's gonna be a little difficult to put in.
I have to go back and research that. That's going to be a little difficult to put in one, but we'll we'll figure that out.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I have to say. Good question, Mr. President. Thank you.
Well, I just read the fine on my ten thousand, ten thousand stuff. But that would be the intent before we vote, right? That we would have that Monday through Friday hourly restriction, right? Not a, not a permanent, semi, that's great. Okay, then. Uh, hearing no other comment, all favor of one-way restrictions, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That motion passed. And the final one of the evening, unless we have had hot business. The ordinance revising the zoning ordinance for sign regulation.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to authorize the preparation and advertisement of an ordinance for formal consideration pending the zoning ordinance sign regulation. I'll second.
Thank you for your enthusiasm. Everybody wants to go home now. Oh, he's fifteen. Come on, guys. Uh, I have motions by councillor Womple and Rogers to authorize the preparation and advertisement of an ordinance for formal consideration. Amending the zoning ordinance sign regulation. Please, some council comments besides me.
I I'm new to council, right? But I've heard that this, the the signs and the and and everything have gone back and forth and the. Uh, you know, we've got an opinion and I think we've had some long and thoughtful discussions around it and I think this is the next step in formalizing that. So we have nothing right now, which is, this is a, this is a good first step.
Right. And as far as I know, comments that I've either seen or heard from council. And with the majority vote recommendation from the planning commission. The big question that was out there was on the percentage of of a frontage that that could be covered. And it'll be a challenge for uh, it's not a challenge. They're going to put within there right now, but the solicitor will put the twenty-five percent. I think, was it twenty-five percent? Twenty, twenty-five percent on a, on the front of the side. If that could be a a big point of deliberation for us. So if any of you have strong feelings about it, now's the the time to uh, send. I I would think just send an email to all of council uh, and we'll. I I I'd really like to know if we're landing on a twenty-five percent so that when we have the uh, the recommended ordinance that we're going to advertise, we would be settled on that.
Yep. Uh, I thought that we decided we would not include that percentage.
Okay, but the all I'm saying is the language still reads.
It still reads that.
Twenty-five percent.
Or council like that language taken out, off the strip.
Yes.
With no respect. That'll be, that'll be the starting point, Charlotte.
Shouldn't we amend the motion?
That's what I wanted to vote to include that language expression.
I would say so. Well, no, I don't think so because what we're authorizing. Yes, yes, we do. Trying to make with with the corrections.
Mr. President, can I make an amendment to?
So we don't know what the final wording is going to be. It should transfer that to. To an ordinance, right? Or.
One of the procedural issues is if you make a substantial change to your ordinance, once it's prepared and advertised. You have to go through the process again. So what that is, the desire of borough council to. Make sure that there is no restrictions on the size of murals on a building. We should incorporate that now.
No, we're only going to authorize the advertising. Okay, so.
And the advertising, if you're advertising, what it's going to be, so you have to, it has to be in the red.
Okay, so Julie, thanks for the clarification. And Mike's exactly right. We we need to amend this to reflect. That the the amendment will have without restriction on the size of the mural on front, uh, frontage or something to that effect. So uh, sorry that I need to put a motion to amend the main motion.
I'll make a motion to amend this to pick the restriction, percentage restriction out.
Yes, thank you. Do I have a second on that amendment? Oh, a second, yeah. Okay, thank you. So bear with me. I'll have to do this for the record. So. Uh, I have a motion to amend the main motion uh, by councillor Littlefield, seconded by councillor Shawley. To. Remove the restrictions for the size of the mural on the front of building. Which uh, would then authorize the preparation and advertisement of that uh, without restrictions of an ordinance for formal consideration. Uh, to amend the zoning sign order. All right, all is the amendment. All in favor of of the amendment to the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Uh, I didn't give you a chance to comment and I will do that, Richard.
Well, I mean, this whole thing's confusing because I understood that we had a twenty-five percent restriction the last time we met.
Now Julie's right. We did, we did be, and we actually put the straw man vote to.
Okay.
Remove any, any restriction. But yeah, thanks for clarifying that.
The danger of relying on memory.
Yeah, okay, so all right, that motion passed. The the amendment passes for uh, to add in the without restriction. Now I'll rephrase the main motion uh, as amended. I'm going to keep the uh. I'm going to keep the original. So I have motions by councillors Littlefield and Shawley. Uh, to authorize the preparation and advertisement of an ordinance for formal consideration. Amending the zoning ordinance sign regulation as amended without restriction for the size of the mural frontage.
Are there any additional comments now on the newly revised main motion?
All right, hearing that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me.
All right. Mr. Secretary, that motion also passed. Oh, is there any other business? None whatsoever. All right, that motion.
President, make a motion for a nerd. All right.
So move. Everyone have a great day and thank you so much for coming out. Okay.